Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Town Council meeting of October 20th, 2025, to order. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Counselor Cortiero.
Here.
Counselor Ulet. Counselor Bugansky. Counselor Balboni. Mayor Del Nicky.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Carey.
Present.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item four. I have a few items of upcoming events. And start with tonight, as many in our community celebrate Diwali, the festival of lights, we recognize the triumph of light over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, and hope over despair. Diwali reminds us that even in challenging times, the glow of compassion, unity, and renewal can guide us forward. To all who celebrate, may your homes be filled with joy, your hearts with peace, and your year ahead with prosperity. Happy Diwali from the town of South Windsor. On Saturday, October 25th, the South Windsor Police Department will hold a medication disposal day at 151 Sand Hill Road from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Residents are encouraged to safely dispose of all medications, including prescription, non-prescription, and over-the-counter items. Household syringes and sharps will also be accepted at no charge, thanks to the support of environmental services. This is for residential disposal only. No commercial disposal will be accepted. It's drive up and drop off. October 28th is National First Responders' Day, and we extend our deepest gratitude to those who answer the call, often at great personal risk, to keep us safe. South Windsor honors the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of our first responders, firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and dispatchers who protect our community every day. Your service is the backbone of our public safety, and we thank you. October 31st is Halloween. As families head out for trick-or-treating, please remember to keep the little ones close and watch carefully for cars when crossing the street. Adults, too, stay alert and help make it safe and fun evening for everyone. On November 1st, our Public Works Department will be holding an electronics recycling event from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at the South Windsor Town Hall. Residents can recycle their electronics for free. No appointments are required. On Monday, November 3rd, curbside vacuum leaf collection will begin, weather permitting. Program details are available on South Windsor's website and through the 24-hour Public Works hotline at 860-648-6371. Election Day is November 4th. However, Connecticut's early voting period began today, October 20th. The 14-day early voting period will be open until Sunday, November 2nd. Early voting is taking place here at the Town Hall in the council chambers. Early voting hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Extended hours are October 28th and October 30th only, and those hours are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Election Day is November 4th. The hours are 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at your regular voting location. Veterans' Day is November 11th. There will be a Veterans' Day ceremony held at Veterans Memorial Park at 11:00 a.m. Veterans Memorial Park is on Pleasant Valley Road. Tonight, I'd like to note that this will most likely be our final meeting before the election. We've traditionally canceled the meeting that falls on Election Eve, and at this time, I am not anticipating any urgent business that would require us to reconvene. If any town matters do arise, the Town Manager will determine whether a meeting is necessary. A final decision regarding the November 3rd meeting will be made next week. If the meeting is canceled, a notice will be posted accordingly. Finally, as I reflect on these past two years, I'm reminded of the privilege it's been to serve the town I've called home for most of my life. I grew up in South Windsor and carry with me the values of this community. From the moment I accepted this role on November 13th, 2023, I've done my best to approach this responsibility with clarity, compassion, and a deep respect for the people of South Windsor. To our residents, thank you. Your trust and engagement have guided me through this term. I've learned that leadership isn't about being the loudest voice. It's about listening, showing up, and doing the work with heart. To my fellow counselors, thank you for your dedication to this town and for the time, thought, and care you bring to each decision. We've worked through challenges, weighed tough choices, and found common ground where it mattered most. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve alongside you. To our Town Manager, thank you for your steady presence and for helping us stay focused on what matters most, serving our residents. To our Town Attorney, your thoughtful guidance has helped us navigate each issue with care and integrity. To our Clerk of the Council, thank you for your professionalism and attention to detail. Your work ensures our meetings run smoothly, and our records reflect the care we bring to every decision. And to the employees of the town of South Windsor, you are the foundation of everything we do, whether you're working in public safety, public works, administration, or community services. You show up every day with pride, purpose, and professionalism. Your dedication makes South Windsor not just a place to live, but a place to belong. As we approach the November election, I remain hopeful, hopeful that our shared values, respect, unity, and service will continue to guide us. We won't always agree, and that's okay. What matters is that we keep showing up, keep listening, and keep working towards what's best for South Windsor. It's been an honor to serve this community, and I look forward to continuing this work together. Moving on to item five, Counselor King. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Pendleton. I would just like to add to your acknowledgement of the first responders. We also have our Department of Public Works, which are also first responders, to acknowledge their service and dedication to our community, too, along with the police officers and ambulance and everything else. And I just want to say thank you. That was very well said, and out of respect, it was very nice.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're on to item five, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt the agenda as written.
Okay, any changes? Counselor Bugansky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move item 17A executive session to after item seven, public input.
Okay, do we have a second? Anything further? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted as amended. Okay, moving on to item six, communications and reports from the Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To start with my written report, Wellness Week, October 20th to 24th. The town will be hosting Wellness Week for staff from October 20th through 24th with the goal of promoting healthy habits and lifestyle choices. Planned activities include a flu vaccine clinic, health screenings, and financial wellness seminars, which are held for all of our employees to participate in. Last Friday, I went to the Demus Training, which is the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. During that meeting, the state rolled out a new framework for municipalities associated with dealing with acts of violence. That new framework is really focused on preventing those acts of violence by coordinating services through both human services and mental health professionals, as well as within our police departments. It was extremely informative, as well as very difficult to listen to a lot of some of the past events that have happened, violent events that have happened, not only within our state but around the country. So, very good event to go to. Needham Warfar Road Fire/Water Solutions. I recently met with the Burke and Willard families of Needham Warfar Road to discuss the town's next steps, as well as the process for funding and completing a potential project. Mr. Stetson and I currently are refining a draft memo that further explores the options previously outlined by the Town Council. Additional research is underway to ensure the council receives the most accurate and comprehensive information. Additionally, I went to the Connecticut Town Managers Association meeting, the CTCMA meeting, last week. During that meeting, it was focused on smooth council transitions, best practices for onboarding, and change management. The big key takeaway from that, I think, as many of you remember from when all of you were elected, we held our Town Council Academy. Our Town Council Academy is far and above anything any of the other managers are doing in the state. I'm hopeful that you all feel that that prepared you well for your time on the council. Always happy to get any feedback you may have. I'm sure all of you have received the letter that I sent out to all the candidates, asking you to block off the date for the next Council Academy and be prepared for that event. So, there were a couple small takeaways that I did get out of that meeting. One was the idea of actually sharing reports and communications that I share with all of you on a regular basis with all of the candidates while they're currently running for office. Not 100% sure how I feel about that idea at this point, because sometimes there are confidential things in there that we might not want to share, but that is something that's being done in other areas that I'm kind of debating in my head whether that's something I'd like to do. But overall, it was a good meeting and nice to share a meal with some colleagues in other communities. Lastly, ICMA credential. I've started work on my ICMA credential, which I expect to complete within the next month. The credentialing process requires 40 hours of annual coursework and a written reflection on the learning outcomes. Submissions are reviewed by the ICMA Credentialing Advisory Board. As of the latest count, there are approximately 1,400 credentialed managers worldwide. And lastly, for my report, I know this is probably going to be your last council meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your dedication and service to the community. I don't think oftentimes you're recognized for the amount of hours that you do dedicate to the town and the work that you do. So, I do want to pass along my appreciation for that. And I do want to offer best wishes and good luck to all of you, as well as all the candidates that are out there. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manoskalco. I see there's nothing further.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, public input for items on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks, or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time? Going once. Going twice. Okay, moving on. Moving on to item 17A, Deputy Mayor.
At this time, we would like to invite Town Manager Michael Manoskalco, Assistant Town Manager Mr. Roberts, appropriate personnel deemed necessary, to review the related pending litigation of McKeeber Associates, 515 John Fitz Boulevard, CGS 1-206B, negotiations with respect to a pending claim or pending litigation.
Could I just suggest we invite the Town Attorney as well?
Oh, and the Town Attorney, sorry.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will be in recess for executive session, and we will return.
Moving on to item eight, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting of October 6th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, changes, corrections? I just have one under the mayor's remarks. The first name of Gene should be spelled G-E-N-E and Janine, the last bullet, Janina, it should be Janina, J-A-N-I-N-A, and the last name is John Kowski. So the letter H needs to be added in for John Kowski, and those are the only changes I have, have. So if anybody else has any corrections? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of the previous meeting as amended? Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item nine, communications from liaisons, officers, boards directly responsible to the council. Counselor Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Water Pollution Authority met on last Tuesday, and just want to point out that there was some public input in regards to the fees and how they're assessed and distributed. The fees that came out, there's a flat fee for everyone that uses their sewers, and some of the public input was that...
Can you move your mic up a little bit? That's why I'm having a...
Oh, okay, no problem. Is that better? So it's a public input in regards to water pollution and the fees they were assessed to the residents who use it, which is the $4.99. Some residents felt as though if they were a smaller family and so forth, why they were getting charged the same amount as other families and so forth, that it's just a town, that's how they decided years ago that they were going to do it. So just looking about creating some dialogue, maybe changing that or discussing in the future how they want to change it, but it's something that the public had some interest on and at least looking at, maybe changing that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, anyone else? Seeing done, moving on to item 10, reports from committees. Counselor Pendleton.
First thing is, you're talking about the WPCA and looking at a better way to... We did that 13 years ago, just to let you know. There was a working group that met and gathered together, the town manager, myself, the mayor, and we sat down and reviewed everything. So there's notes from that working group and meeting with WPCA, and at that time, the recommendation was to maintain a $450 fee from 13 years ago to where we are today.
Right.
And that money could have been kept in the reserve for whatever came up and whatever happened. And they didn't accept it. We looked at various numbers, we looked at various ways to do the billing on that. So I just wanted to say, if you want to gather information on that working group, I'm sure the minutes of that group are still here.
And I believe it was 2018 that they mentioned last time they did it.
Even before then.
Yeah.
13 years, yeah, a long time ago, maybe even 10 years ago, something like that. And Tom Dalenicki was the mayor at the time. So, yeah, there's minutes on those meetings so that they can look back on those.
Yeah.
And we met with the WPCA. And now I'll get to my committee, thanks, I just wanted to tell you that. Capital Projects Met, and Mr. Roberts is here, so I'd like for Mr. Roberts, before you sit down, we're talking about capital projects. Come on up and give us a scoop in the fill-in of the meeting that we had, if you would, please. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Capital Projects Met, we kind of just went over the ground rules because obviously we have an election coming up, we don't know who's going to be on the capital projects committee until after the election. So we just went over the basic ground rules, the procedures, the timeline of what it would take to establish our capital projects budget. We looked back at last year's spreadsheet where we funded about 3.6 million, and we had about 6.3 million left over, we're looking at bringing that forward, but we're also asking all the departments to go back and make sure that those are still their priorities. So hopefully, when we meet next month after the election and the capital project committee is seated, we'll get right to work.
I'd just like to add to that, that for having $40 million with the projects, on capital projects, we're only funded 3.6 or 3.2 million...
3.63, something like that.
A year doesn't allow us to get much done within our community. And looking at the needs of our infrastructures, looking at the needs of our ADA ratings, our ADA handicap things that Clay does, but also looking at funding for the revale and talking about various buckets and looking at buying police radios or buying fire department stuff or an elevator in a school, those are big hunks of money. And whatever council sits here in the future needs to realize that we need to fund capital projects to get the necessity, necessary items done within our community, and it's health, safety, and welfare that we have to address. So we try to do that very diligently and very pristinely and tightly with every penny. And I have to say that our departments are very good at returning money back to us after the projects are completed, so I'm very proud of them for what they do. So I'm very proud of them for what they do. So I just wanted to report on that, thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 11, consent agenda. Counselor Willet.
All right, motion to approve 11B-1 through 11B-4 as a second reading on the consent agenda. First, resolution appointing Michelle Althoff as an alternate member of the Board of Assessment Appeals to replace the unexpired term of Jeff Trachtenberg. Yeah, I'm just going to do them all. Do we need to do them individually?
No, we can do them all, one big swoop.
Second, resolution appointing Michelle Althoff as an alternate member of the WPCA to replace the unexpired term of Mark DeCiancia. Third, resolution appointing Jeff Trachtenberg as a member of Zoning Board of Appeals to replace the unexpired term of Wayne Kilburn. And fourth, resolution appointing John Torres as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals to replace the unexpired term of Jeff Trachtenberg.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to 11C, miscellaneous, having none. Item 12, unfinished business, having none. Moving on to new business, 13A, Fire Prevention Week Presentation on Lithium Ion Battery Safety. We have Captain Greg Roberts here, from the South Windsor Fire Department.
Well, thank you very much for having me sit here, or stand here together with you guys. As you know, this month is Fire Prevention Month. There's been banners up around the town, there's three of them, about lithium ion batteries. Lithium ion batteries is what NFPA is picking on now, but if you've seen anything, I think Facebook is alive with, it's alive a lot, but with, in Chapel Hill, with Colton, the dog that ate, was trying to chew on a lithium ion battery, that caused it to go. What I'm here to say is, we need to be careful with lithium ion batteries. If they're damaged, if they're, if they're, if they're the wrong type, those need to be placed in those areas for disposal, which, you know, basically Public Works can dispose them, Home Depot, Lowe's, they have sites for those. Lithium ion batteries is in everything, your phones, to your, to your computers, to your Makitas and your DeWalt's, Milwaukee's, all of those have them. So it's important to take care of them. You want to charge them, don't leave them on charge forever, and to also have them on a charge on a flat surface without any other combustible material. I'm going to bring back Colton the dog. When he did that, he did it on a rug, it was a flat surface, it was nice, you can see that it went out afterwards, which is important. The fuel load died down, and it saved the house. Of course, the house was full of smoke, and it would have been better had the dog not grabbed the lithium ion battery pack and chewed on it, but it's important. Also, your bikes and your scooters are important to make sure that they're taken care of. I don't know if you know kids, but kids will go out there and they will try anything once. And so if the, inspect their batteries for them. If the housing is cracked, it needs to be discarded, discarded properly too, because we don't want to put them into a garbage truck and have that catch on fire either. So put them in the right places. As I said before, Public Works, and also Home Depot, Lowe's, Batteries Plus, they'll take those batteries back. They need to be staying at room temperature, not over tipped, not frozen, and to store them properly. I really appreciate it. We've, we have been doing fire prevention this month at all the schools. Friday, we'll be at Orchard Hill, you guys are welcome to come by and see it. We'll be there for the whole day for the second grade class, and then we'll be at Crick following Tuesday. We're looking forward to the month ending, but it has been a great month for teaching the kids about fire prevention, and also the seniors, to try and teach them about fire safety and kitchen safety. So thank you very much.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Captain Roberts, could you please mention about changing the batteries in smoke detectors? Spring and fall?
Yeah, it's a good idea to change them every, twice a year, but also, I would buy the batteries that have the 10-year life. Those are great. And also to put the same, we're noticing people when they come to us, about talking about, hey, I'm putting in a new battery, they put a battery-powered one instead of an AC/DC with a battery backup. So those are important, that we put the same type in that your house has. So if your house is older, like where I live, it's battery-only, but if you have a newer home, those need to have the AC/DC with battery backup. So those, you know, just look at, if you have any questions, you always can call the Fire Department, or the Fire Marshal, either Kevin or Walt have all the answers, so.
Next question, how was the dog?
The dog was fine.
Thank you.
Colton was fine. If you read all the thread and everything else, did you see the video?
Thank you.
If you didn't, it's on my Facebook page, you can see it. But also, I've been putting some stuff out about all the safety. I think we really need to try to be safe, and I think lithium ion batteries can, is one of those things right now, that New York City, New Haven, are having a horrible time with lithium ion batteries. Any other questions before I walk away, the second time?
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Moving on to 13B, Counselor Pendleton.
Resolution approving a flag-flying request to fly the United States Marine Corps flag to commemorate the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a request to fly the United States Marine Corps flag from November 1, 2025, through November 15, 2025, and asks the town manager, Michael Maniscalco, to have the flag raised on the flagpole at the Wapping Community House on Saturday, November 1, 2025, and lowered on Saturday, November 15, 2025, in honor of the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps, as shown in Exhibit A.
Second.
Ooh, right Marines.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to 13C, Deputy Mayor Carey.
Resolution approving refund batch number five for four refunds totaling $1,099.58, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves four refunds, the total of said refunds being $1,099.58, as more fully described in Exhibit B.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 13D, Counselor Balboni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving a settlement of litigation, nope. Resolution approving refund batch number six for 32 refunds totaling $10,146.68, be it resolved, the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves 32 refunds, the total of said refunds being $10,146.68, as more fully described in Exhibit C.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to 13E, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving a settlement of litigation with McKeever Associates regarding 5/15 John Fitch Boulevard blight matters. Be it resolved that the town of South Windsor hereby agrees to resolve the pending litigation entitled McKeever Associates LLC versus the town of South Windsor, pending in the Federal District Court case number 25-CV-00295OAW, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement dated October 20, 2025, and authorizes the town manager to execute such settlement agreement.
We have a second? Second. All those in, any discussion? We got your lady. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, 13F, we can't do that yet. 13G, we got five minutes to our public hearing, do we have a, make a five-minute recess? Motion to make a five-minute recess?
Motion for five seconds.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, four more minutes. Going to call the regular town council meeting back to order, and we're going to suspend the regular meeting to have our public hearing. The public hearing is to receive citizen input on amendments to Ordinance Number 233, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of open space, purchase of development rights. Ms. Senterth, if you could please read the public notice.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, October 10, 2025, legal ad to the town of South Windsor. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, October 20, 2025, at 8:00 PM, in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave., South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the amendments to Ordinance 233, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of open space, purchase of development rights, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, the 7th day of October, 2025, testified to by Catherine Senterth, Executive Assistant.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the council during this public hearing regarding the changes to Ordinance Number 233? Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time? Okay, don't be shy. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will take a straw poll. This is a straw poll, not a scientific poll. For those in favor of the changes to Ordinance Number 233, please raise your hand if you are in favor. Any opposed? Okay, and, okay, since it's not scientific, okay, thank you. We will now resume our regular meeting. All right, moving on to item 13F, Counselor Bogansky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution regarding the final approval for the acceptance of the conveyance of 155 Griffin Road to the town of South Windsor is an open space parcel. Whereas Section 78-46 of the Town Code of Ordinances, Ordinance Number 164, requires the town council to approve the form of the deed of conveyance for the acceptance of open space properties, and to notify the town Inland Wetlands Commission and Town Planning and Zoning Commission of any concerns, objections, or questions. Whereas the attached form of deed of conveyance of 155 Griffin Road for open space purposes has been prepared by the town attorney and reviewed by the town council, now therefore be it resolved that the form of the deed of conveyance of 155 Griffin Road for open space purposes is approved, as per Exhibit D.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, sorry, just very quickly, I've heard in my travels around town, some people talking about this particular purchase of open space, and, you know, complaining about it, and I just would like to kind of put on the record for everyone in town, that if we were not buying this piece of property to preserve its open space, you know, the surveyors and people in town have deemed that this, this lot could potentially hold eight to 10 residential lots on it. So this is a, I believe, a smart purchase on our part, to preserve land in town as open space, it backs right up to Ryce Street Park, and I think it's a great thing to do, and if we're trying to kind of keep, keep our housing stock a little bit down, so we're not putting more kids into our schools, I think this is a smart use of our money. Thank you.
Right, since it is adjacent to the park, they're going to use it to expand more fields, and I think they're preserving one of the barns? Mr. Maniscalco?
We haven't had the chance to actually get in and survey all the buildings yet, but we do have plans to hopefully preserve one of the barns, possibly. I'm not positive on the other structures on the property yet.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Counselor Fitzgerald, thank you, Madam Mayor, that it's very important. Also, last April, I guess, when we approved the POCD, and Planning and Zoning put out a POCD, they have to do it every 10 years, the number one thing that people of the town of South Windsor wanted was open space. You know, many people feel that it's essential to maintain open space in town, so that we don't lose some of the things that make South Windsor so special. So I definitely think that this is the right thing to do.
Okay, any further, oh, Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, just one more thing, I forgot. I know that there's, there are a few buildings on the property, most have been deemed uninhabitable. Is there anything, is there anything in those buildings... anything, is there anything in those buildings that could be salvaged and either sold or repurposed for other things in the town?
So, the current owner of the property, which is not the town, uh, has had multiple months at this point to go through those buildings, remove anything of value that they believe that they wanted, so, um, again, I don't know what's inside or not at this point, once, uh, we do sign it and get the keys, we'll go take a look, and as usual, if there's something that we can profit off of, we would, um, I don't foresee there being a whole lot, but we'll have to kind of wait until we get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to thirteen G, Counselor Willett.
Sorry, resolution approving the purchase of development rights as shown in the attached Exhibit E. Whereas the town of South Windsor feels that the preservation of farmland and open space are very important, and whereas the required public hearing was held on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to amend ordinance number two-three-three, and ordinance authorizing the acquisition of open space slash purchase developments, development of right, purchase of development rights, and whereas an eight dash twenty-four referral was sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and at their regular meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, they forwarded a favorable review by unanimous consensus of the purchase of development rights for the following addresses: five seventy-two Main Street, six zero five Main Street, eight thirty-four Main Street, eight sixty Main Street, eight seventy-four Main Street, eight ninety-four Main Street, nine oh six Main Street, and ninety-five Newberry Road, South Windsor, Connecticut. And whereas the purchase of development rights for this property have been endorsed by the Open Space Task Force, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Agricultural Commission, now therefore be it resolved that the town of South, the South Windsor Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager, Michael Maniscalco, to sign and execute an agreement and any other necessary documentation for the purchase of development rights for up to a total of one hundred and thirteen point seven-five, plus or minus, acres being all or portions of the properties located at five seventy-two Main Street, six oh five Main Street, eight thirty-four Main Street, eight sixty Main Street, eight seventy-four Main Street, eight ninety-four Main Street, nine oh six Main Street, and ninety-five Newberry Road, South Windsor, Connecticut, for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars per acre totaling one million seven hundred and six thousand dollars, or seven hundred and six, two hundred and fifty dollars, seven hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item fourteen, passes of ordinance, Counselor Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the amendments to ordinance number two-three-three and ordinance authorizing the acquisition of open space, purchase of development rights. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby adopts the amendments to ordinance number two-three-three and ordinance authorizing acquisition of open space, purchase of development rights, as shown in Exhibit F.
Did you say second, Deputy Mayor?
I just have a question.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, Counselor Pendleton?
Attorney Crilla, did we not do that backwards? Should we not have done the ordinance change first before we did the properties? Just curious on the process.
I think if you get to the same spot tonight, it'll probably be a non-issue, I think, technically speaking, you might have want to consider adopting the ordinance first, but that's okay, I think you get to the same spot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor, uh, Deputy Mayor Carey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention, I know there's been some question about the, what development rates are, and, um, I know everybody at this table knows that, but I thought I'd share just for, um, everybody in town. When town purchases development rights, basically what they're doing is they're saying, this land can never be sold for a development, um, and the town has done this before, and Mr. Maniscalco, please correct me, but I think Foster Street has, um, purchased development rights there, and, you know, that does a couple things, as farmers decide that they don't want to farm anymore, you know, their option is to sell it to a developer, and if they sell it to a developer, we end up with a lot of homes, and we also lose some of the things that make South Windsor special, which I think, you know, our agriculture, you know, people growing crops in the town, and not just for South Windsor, but for the state in general. So, um, purchasing the development rights doesn't mean we're buying the land, it just means we're saying, we're gonna buy from you the right to sell this to a developer so that when you do go to sell it, it has to be sold to someone who will farm it, okay, or who will leave it be, but what you can't do is you can never sell it to someone who's going to put houses on it, or develop it in any way as a mall or anything else, but happens to be residentially zoned, so we're going to say houses. So, that, that's what development rights are, and to put it in perspective, I know this looks like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but, um, this is fifteen thousand dollars an acre, right now in South Windsor, acre is going for almost a hundred thousand dollars an acre, so, you know, when you look at what you're doing is you're allowing somebody who is willing to give this to the town at a tremendous discount, um, and that will affect their heirs in the future because they can only sell it to farmers, and therefore the price will be lower, but that also means that farmers who want to expand will have the opportunity to buy the land because it is lower. So, I don't know if I helped or I confused things, I know sometimes I can confuse things, but, um, I just thought it was worth telling people what development rights is, as opposed to open space, when we actually, which we did at Griffin, where we actually bought the land itself. Okay, thank you.
Right, and everything is in perpetuity, so this can never, ever change, so, I hate to say never, ever, but it says in perpetuity, so we're gonna take it at that, so, any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, in regards to follow-up to your statement, Counselor Carey, um, it also, I believe, not only is it, um, they can't build, but also it includes they can't put solar farms, correct, because it has to be agricultural and not solar farms, so that's another avenue, not only development buildings, but it also prevents them putting solar farms in there as well, which I think is very important as we move towards a future, as a lot of those companies will try and buy land to put solar farms up.
Right, because it says agricultural, which is...
It's agricultural, so it has to be agricultural, so you have to grow, and not...
And that's what we want to keep farming?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item fifteen, public input for any matter. Public input for any other matter over which the council has jurisdiction shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by the mayor, this speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or puning, alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council on any item over which the council has jurisdiction. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time? Mr. Kennedy?
Joe Kennedy Junior, eighty-one Allison Drive. We thank the counselors for their hard work and dedication and wish them good luck in the election. Then I got a few items, um, they have a national tone on them, but it will affect people on a local level. First, uh, I'm going to address the mega bill that was passed by Congress and signed into law. It will cut one trillion dollars from Medicaid. That, well, it'll potentially affect twenty to twenty-four million, so people that are sick and people are disabled. Not only will it do that, but when you're talking rural hospitals and nursing homes, without that money, going to those hospitals and nursing homes, people will lose jobs, and there's a potential of hundreds of nursing homes and hospitals closing. I mean, healthcare is, is a big issue. Second, I'd like to address, uh, federal layoffs. And the reason why I do that, I'll show you all the guys and girls with the red shirts there, that's a Rural Careers Union, we're, we are federal employees, and what people don't realize, you can't just fire a federal employee, you sign a contract, it's like you buying a car, and then you say, oh, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay anymore, and, and that's it. So, these are hard-working people, sixty percent of the federal workers are veterans, so I think people don't realize that. I'll, I'll mention one name, Russell Voit, he's the budget director, he also is the author of Project Twenty Twenty-Five, so if you have time, Google it or whatever, I have to, I have to get my brother to do it, because I'm not on, I don't have a computer or anything like that. So, finally, there, uh, next year, when they have the budget, they're talking about cuts to Medicaid, Medicare and Social Security. Luckily, we have, uh, Connecticut Congressman John Larson, who's been on the front lines. I don't think it'll happen, but just like people didn't think Medicaid would be cut, it's, uh, I, John's always been on the front line, and he's been the vanguard of protecting , uh, Social Security and Medicare. And finally, uh, there's another one, privatizing the post office, I don't think that's going to be done, I'll give you people, the universal delivery, that means no matter where you are, you get delivery six days a week. I mean, uh, like these people here, they're on, most of them are on southern states, rural areas, they have like sixty, hundred, hundred-and-fifty mile routes. I was sometime, South Windsor was rural one time in the, in the seventies, when I started out, I worked out of a car, I had a, I sold stamps and money orders, and then South Windsor grew, we're not rural anymore, just, that's why it was good that these people, uh, did a good job, uh, getting Griffin Road, uh, development rights, that's the way to go, like you were saying, a hundred thousand acre, and, uh, what the mayor says, that's forever, uh, there's prop, uh, up on Needawerford Road, a hundred and thirty acres up there, uh, the State of Connecticut bought development rights up there. I think the town, uh, like the ag commission, open space, wetlands, uh, uh, parking wreck, and, uh, planning and zoning, we all coordinate together, and we've done a good job to keep South Windsor semi-rural. And finally, Connecticut is a compassionate, common-sense state that teaches tolerance and calls out hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Anyone else who would like to come forward at this time, for any matter? Going once, going twice, okay, moving on, thank you. Moving on to item sixteen, communications from the council. You don't disappoint, Counselor Pendleton.
Sorry, I'm gonna make it really quick. I'd just like to say thank you to the South Windsor Fire Department for sponsoring four of our members on our volunteer fire department to go to Staten Island this past weekend to honor the fallen firefighters of nine eleven, and the ones that have died and passed away since nine eleven. I'm gonna get the numbers wrong, but I do believe that we're, there were a hundred and seventy-six firefighters, and there were over five hundred family members that attended the memorial service this weekend. And I'm very honored to say that, my husband was one of them, but I'm very honored to say that our town is an exceptional town that steps in and acknowledges, honors the families of the fallen firefighters, and I want to say thank you to the men and women of our fire department from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, I just wanted to echo your sentiments from the beginning of the meeting and just say thank you to everyone, uh, on the council, it's been an honor to serve with you all over the last year and a half, and, um, you know, I, I too was born and raised in this town and came back as an adult to raise my own kids here, and it's been a real honor and a privilege to work with you all and to work with you, Mr. Maniscalco, and the town attorney, and, and the great workers in this town, and wish everyone luck in the, in the coming weeks, and hopefully we'll see each other back here in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Cordero?
Yes, thank you, I would say thank you for everybody's, uh, help for the last short-term month and a half, I was able to be on the council, but I'd like to give kudos to, um, Timothy Edwards, uh, music band, um, under Mr. Marcy, who once again this year, they were chosen to do the season opener for the Wolf Pack, which is like three years in a row, I believe, now, because their performances, um, according to the staff, like top-notch, that was even before they knew I was from South Windsor, they were just telling me that on the side, so, thank you to Mr. Marcy, the band, they sounded fantastic, and, uh, great job on him and his staff.
Okay, seeing nothing further. Okay, item seventeen, executive session, we've already done that. We're on ni, item eighteen, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.